Okay, we'll go ahead and. We'll call.
Mr. Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. Hilsinger.
Here.
Mr. Lawler.
Here.
And Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Okay, that gives us five. We need a motion to accept the. Minutes from the October twenty-five meeting.
I make a motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. No status sheet, no committee reports. We'll go to the first item, which is. New business consideration. PC twenty-six dash twenty-one. Dairy Maids, Inc.
Hello, this is PC twenty-six twenty-one Dairy Maids, Inc. It's a request for a CUP in the C two and F P C two on a one point zero six acre tract of land in the southwest quadrant of Hall's Ferry Road and Capel Drive. The site is home to an occupied retail strip in addition to the vacant vehicle service center, which is the subject of this position. As you recall, this site is in North County. Here's a second aerial where you can see the commercial frontage along Hall's Ferry and the residential behind. This is the preliminary site development plan presented at public hearing. The existing one thousand two hundred and fifty square foot building will remain. They are proposing to add one accessible parking space. No new landscaping is proposed and no other site improvements are proposed. The planning department is recommending the petitioner close the eastern entrance from Capel Drive as directed by the St. Louis County Department of Transportation and close the northern entrance from Hall's Ferry Road if directed by MoDOT. Also recommending revising the use of wheel stops to control traffic within the site as approved on the site development plan. The site will also have to comply with the landscaping and lighting requirements for the underlying C two. The department recommends approval of this request. We find that commercial zoning is in keeping with the surrounding land use. That a vehicle repair facility is appropriate at this site, which had been used as a vehicle service center from nineteen fifty-four through twenty-twenty. We're recommending that the eastern curb cut along on Capel Drive be closed as directed by the county Department of Transportation. Additionally, no wrecked or damaged and immobilized vehicles may be stored on the site for more than seventy-two hours, which is a requirement from the zoning ordinance.
Okay. We need a motion of some kind. Anyone?
Make a motion, we accept it with the. Changes that were noted.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Lawler.
Discussion.
Yes, I have a question. If directed by MoDOT, you recommend that. What what's their take on this so far? Do you know?
They did not recommend to close, they didn't recommend anything about closing it.
So then, that if doesn't have to be in there, is that right?
Uh, MoDOT typically gives us sort of their boilerplate comments about, uh, you know, making improvements per their access guidelines, but they did not specifically recommend closing the northern entrance. Um, but if they did, this is included in the analysis portion of the report, but it's not included in the conditions of development.
So do they listen to your recommendation? You're saying. But you're saying if, so you're letting them off the hook, I guess is what you're doing. You recommend that they they have one. Only if directed by MoDOT.
The the main issue is if you look at the plan that's up now, Abby has a box around the wheel stops that currently separate what was a vehicle service center from the rest of the site. And so it sort of depends on how the site development plan is submitted if the CUP is granted. If that northern entrance would close, they would likely need to remove those wheel stops because then they would only have one curb cut if the one access point on Capitol is closed and one on New Hall's Ferry. Um, so it sort of depends. So we've written it with that flexibility, but it it would be a conversation between planning staff and MoDOT during the site development plan review portion.
Okay, then the other question is, uh, the seventy-two hour limitation of damage and wrecked vehicles. How do we put more teeth into someone enforcing those rules? Because I see a lot of these places up here are getting into that business where they have wrecked automobiles sitting out front. A typical example, like one on, uh, I think that's Dunn Road up there at, uh, Old Hall's Ferry. Used to be a Shell service station there while you guys weren't here. That's in the planning department, but I think, uh, Wayne, you remember that, don't you?
I remember that, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, so they have a lot of wrecked vehicles around there. I don't know if they're repairing them or what they're doing. And there's some more establishments that are coming up doing the same thing. I'm just wondering, uh, you know, how do we put teeth into that? That makes sure they, you know, stop that. Lou, I don't know if you're seeing that, or you seeing the same thing?
Actually, I have not. I'm wondering, um, what part of Dunn Road, uh, at what shale?
Well, it's not there anymore, it's Old Hall's Ferry. And Dunn Road right behind the, uh, uh, you know where the big church is up there?
Yes.
Tower. Okay, there's a service station down there, they don't a lot of repair down there now. They fixed in, uh, over a new bridge and new roads and everything.
Okay.
So enforcement of this condition and, you know, as Abby mentioned, it's in the zoning ordinance outright would come from the Public Works zoning enforcement division. And what would probably kick in their enforcement would be a citizen complaint or a neighbor complaint. Um, Jacob, I don't know if you have. If you'd like to weigh in on that.
No, that, I mean, essentially, that's what I was gonna say is that, um, you know, the it would require the issuance of a citation by the Department of Public Works sending out an inspector. Um, if a violation is to be, is a violation is noticed or discovered, um, it could be a violation based, um, you know, sort of, sort of, um, expectation. Um, we find that the seventy-two hours, it comports with the, you know, with what goes on in the zoning ordinance. Um, you know, in terms, you know, in terms of. I don't know whether you're, the concern is, you know, you want these these cars, these vehicles shielded from visibility. Um, you know, I think the department's concern about that would be is that then you're almost inviting almost a vehicle storage yard, um, de facto to sort of show up if you said, you know, hide them behind behind, um, uh, you know, a site-proof fence. Um, so that would be a concern, I think, of the department. We'd want to do an analysis if that was one of the, one of the directives of the commission. But really, it would be like Mel said, it would be really focused on, um, a violation and someone noticing the violation and then in going through that process, which would ultimately take them to court if they didn't, if they didn't clear up their violations.
Well, Jacob, if you didn't have, if you're only doing general auto repair, you shouldn't have, uh, wrecked vehicles there to begin with.
You shouldn't, um, you know, but with this being the higher of the of the two automotive service type, um, type uses, this is the higher intensity where engines can be re, it could be, you know, installed, where where really truly heavy work can be done, um, inside of these bays. So there could theoretically be a time in which a vehicle would be, um, you know, sitting on the site. Um, hope it should be appropriately brought in, you, you know, repaired during the day and then, you know, stored, um, on the exterior, but there should be clear and obvious movement that the that the vehicle is being repaired and not just being stored for days or weeks on end, um, waiting for repair.
From a public hearing, if I remember correctly, he did not have anyone lined up to take the space.
That is our understanding that this is a, um, in some ways, this is, they are attempting or desiring to, um, establish the the required uses so that they can, um, hopefully get a new tenant into the space. But you are correct, yes.
And his, um. My take from what they were indicating was, um. Uh, they were going to do no improvements to the exterior of the building, which was in pretty rough shape. And it was kind of like, take it or leave it, here's what I'm. You give me the zoning and this is it.
Mel, was that accurate? I thought that they were.
I think the petitioner indicated that, uh, building improvements would be, um, at the tenant, the tenant's responsibility.
We don't know who the tenant is or the extent of those improvements.
Correct.
Correct. Any re improvements that they would be doing would br, would have to make sure that it comports with building code.
What's our guarantees?
Yeah, I thought he said if repairs were made, it would be at the tenants. So if the tenant chooses to just stay with the building as is, then there's no repair or anything.
That's correct.
If, if again.
I understood, the way that I understood it was that when and if a tenant comes, there is going to have to be some repairs done to the building one way or another, no matter what happens when a tenant comes. So, and this may be, I would need to go back and re-watch the public hearing, but my understanding of it was is that it was when and if they get a tenant, then it will be their responsibility to make the repairs, but it wouldn't necessarily be just a, um. That the, that there would be no repairs made. Um, however, um, did we, Mel, inside of the conditions for this conditional use permit, is there any sort of architectural requ, or any sort of?
I don't think, I don't think we included, um, it's hard for me to pull it up while I'm screen sharing, but I don't think we included architectural elevation review, Abby, we did not.
Okay.
Okay, we, we want architectural review on everything. Whether it's this petition or another one, the commission does want architectural review where we can get it on any petition.
Okay. I think that we can add, not think, we can add that. Um, so we will add the standard section, which is that architectural review will be required. Architectural elevation shall be, um, reviewed in conjunction with the site development plan. Um, and that architectural review would have to be come before the commission for approval. Um, I would say that we could also not only just add merely review, um, we could add, you know, I don't know whether we would want to, want to say on there that, um, we would expect, um, the structure to be, you know, completely repainted. Um, there could be some, you know, some, at least, you know, at least something to to ensure that the exterior, um, you know, um, isn't, is improved. So I would say that at a bare minimum from a, from an architectural review standpoint, um, you know, we would want to see the color of any sort of repainting. Um, and we could add a condition either in the architectural review or in somewhere else and that, uh, you know, an exterior repaint or or some sort of, um, exterior improvements will be required if that is, um, the will of the commission.
Yeah, I, if that's okay with the first and second.
Yeah, that was my last questions, and what do we see it? So, yes, it's okay, I didn't second it.
Yeah, I seconded it, I seconded it, and I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, from what I remember, the the building was. It desperately needed a paint job and the the parking lot itself was full of potholes and, uh, desperately in need of, uh.
Overlaid.
Resurfacing.
Yeah.
But I just don't think we should just hand them a, uh, a zoning and they do nothing in return.
Sure.
To improve the area.
Mel, was there, was there a condition put into that to require, um, but the the parking lot, at least in front of their use and sort of in their general vicinity? I'm not saying that this would necessarily, you know, require the entirety of the site because it is a larger site, um, but there'd be resurfacing or at least repair, resurfacing on and or repair of the parking lot?
I think it's as directed by transportation because it's in the floodplain.
Yeah, that's right.
Given it's already paved, they should be able to resurface it in the, in the floodplain.
I mean, we can add, we can add a condition into attachment.
That's clear.
Yes, that's clear.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else have anything? Seeing none with those items being added, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. And we'll go on to the next one, which is PC twenty-seven dash twenty-one. Jeremy King, the watering bowl.
Uh, good evening, uh, this is PC twenty-seven dash twenty-one Jeremy King, the watering bowl. Um, as you'll recall, this is a request for a change in zoning from R two to C eight uh, for a one point six three acre tract on the west side of the intersection of Mattis Road and Worthington Drive and the east side of Old Tesson Road. Um, you can see here from the the county context, um, again, it's in South County. Um, you can see the parcel outlined in red. Um, I did want to draw your attention to the unique triangular shape, um, of the parcel. And you can see that in more detail here, uh, there's some challenges presented uh, by that, the triangular shape of of the parcel. Uh, so this is the preliminary site development plan that was shown at public hearing. Um, the petitioner is proposing the, to the adaptive reuse of the existing structure, um, as well as adding an enclosed turfed play yard, um, just to the west and north of of the existing building immediately adjacent to it. Uh, there are two curb cuts proposed along Mattis Road. Um, they're, they're one way, one inbound, one outbound. Um, and then they are showing landscaping along Mattis Road um, and the interior of the parking lot, um, and then some additional trees, um, further north along Mattis. Um, the Worthington Drive right of way, the the structure, um, where it begins at Mattis and goes along Worthington Drive has a ten-foot setback and then, uh, the structure, um, the facade, um, uh, comes up to the Worthington Drive, uh, right of way as you go along, uh, Worthington there and there is no more, uh, setback, um, from the building to Worthington Drive, um, to where the building ends. Uh, so some recommended revisions, um, to the site development plan include additional landscaping both along Mattis Road, um, but additionally along Old Tesson Road. Um, there is, you know, an excessive amount of pavement on this site, so, um, you know, restoring that to a more natural state and and putting, you know, landscape buffer yard, excuse me, along Old Tesson, um, is is recommended. Uh, and then since there is no buffer yard on Worthington Drive, um, in lieu of landscaping, uh, we are recommending an art installation, um, of some sort, whether that be, um, a mural or, um, a unique design, uh, or 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 what have you. Uh, we're kind of leaving that up to the the petitioner or the developer to submit something. Um, but the the idea would be to have, you increase visual interest, to break up the facade a little bit. And so you're not just looking at at a a big wall, uh, and that's to, you know, increase the aesthetics of the site, um, in lieu of the landscaping that can't be provided. Um, additionally, the the petitioner is showing, uh, chain link fencing around the perimeter of the site. And the turf play yard where the dogs will be outside is shown as, um, completely enclosed by a site-proof fence, um, so the department doesn't feel there's a need for perimeter fencing any anymore. Um, I would call out, though, that we are recommending a permanent barrier be installed at on the sort of south, southwestern corner of the site, um, along Worthington Drive where the ramp starts, um, just to prevent unauthorized access as a safety concern. Um, so we are recommending a permanent barrier be installed there. Um, we're recommending approval. Um, the commercial zoning is reasonable and is in keeping with the surrounding land use and development pattern. Additionally, the the triangular shape of that lot really makes residential, um, uses untenable. And, you know, and in, coupled with, you know, you know, lot, you know, lot size requirements in the zoning ordinance, but additionally, you know, single-family lot design standards, um, would really make it difficult for a residential development to occur on the site. Um, the C eight plan commercial district procedure, um, allows for site-specific conditions of development to protect surrounding permitted land uses, specifically, uh, those residential land uses to the east of the site. And the proposed use aligns with the goals of the Six County Council District Community Area Study, which recommends, uh, commercial development along the Tesson Ferry Commercial Corridor, um, particularly development that would serve the needs of, um, businesses in the area, but as well as the the individuals in the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, some sp, specific conditions of development, uh, that we are recommending is architectural review, um, um, including any, uh, art installation and signage that would be proposed. Uh, limiting the height of lighting standards to sixteen feet and keeping with, um, the requirements, uh, maximum lighting standard height in a residential district. And then enhanced landscaping, um, to include Missouri native, um, plants. Um, and then additionally, that, you know, landscaping along the Old Tesson Road. And so at this time, I would ask for a motion for approval.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a second?
Lawler seconds.
Okay, discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. No old business letters or anything, so we'll go to correspondence. First item, uh, is a text amendment.
Yes, so we have two, uh, two resolutions of intent for two different, uh, proposed text amendments to the zoning ordinance. The first is a resolution of intent regarding electric vehicle charging or EV charging. Um, just this past month, the county council adopted an ordinance requiring the installation of EV charging stations in parking lots in unincorporated St. Louis County um, for pretty much the range of land uses except for residential. Uh, right now, the zoning ordinance does not require electric vehicle charging in parking lots for any use. Um, so if the planning commission adopts this resolution, we will hold a public hearing regarding this text amendment at the November twenty-second public hearing.
Okay, we need a, we want to do these together or you want to do?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll do the other one as well. So the second one is a, uh, resolution of intent regarding the FP floodplain district regulations of the zoning ordinance. Currently, the FP floodplain district, uh, requires a report by a professional engineer for any work in the floodplain to ensure that, um, the floodplain is protected. This includes projects that are really minor in nature and may not impact the floodplain at all, such as a driveway overlay. Um, the Department of Transportation has asked that the commission looks at the requirements for a PE signature seal on these plans. So if the commission adopts this resolution of intent, we would hold a public hearing on this topic at the November twenty-second public hearing as well.
Okay, uh, we need a motion.
My motion that we, um, uh, pass this resolution of intent to install EV, uh, station in unincorporated Sanders County. Also, the, uh, intent of floodplain district, uh, regulation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, anyone? Either item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. And the next item is, uh, Communication General Grant Realty. Fifty-four ninety-one and fifty-five ninety-one.
Yes, this is PC fifty-four ninety-one General Grant Realty and PC fifty-five ninety-one Brehan Swanson, Inc. It's a request for an amendment to C eight ordinance fifteen thousand seven two seven to increase the maximum square footage of the convenience store from twenty-four hundred square feet to twenty-seven hundred square feet. This request is different from the thrift store request that you saw a few weeks ago on the same site. Um, this is in a different part of the retail development. As you may recall, this site is in South County and there you can see it outlined in red. Here is another aerial highlighting just the gas station and convenience store. It's at the western part of the site at the entrance from Telegraph Road. This is the preliminary site development plan. The C eight currently allows a twenty-four hundred square foot convenience store with a thirteen hundred square foot car wash. The petitioner is requesting instead a twenty-seven hundred square foot convenience store be allowed with a thirteen hundred square foot car wash. The department is recommending approval of this request. We find that the proposed use is in keeping with the overall retail development at this site. And the petitioner is proposing a two hundred and ninety-four square foot addition, which we feel is a minor change to the building size.
Okay, um, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
We have a second?
I second, go, Lawrence.
Discussion, anyone?
Where did he get the extra three hundred square feet? I'm just curious, did he get it internally or did he expand the building?
It'll be a building expansion to add a a walk-in freezer and storage, I believe.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero and we've got, um, two site plans. First one is PC oh-five and oh-five dash ninety-one McBride Bearland Company.
Good evening, tonight I have, um, the site plan for PC oh-four and oh-five two-one McBride Bearland Company LLC for the Shadow Point subdivision. As you can see from the context map, the site is located in South St. Louis County. Um, and it's at, uh, Telegraph Road and Fine Road. So looking at the site plan, you could see that it's for, um, it's a twenty-five point eight four acre site with fifty-three single-family lots. The site is accessed via an internal drive that terminates in a permanent cul-de-sac that does provide for connectivity for future expansion. Um. Looking, this is a closer look at, um, each side of the subdivision. The average lot size is seventy to a hundred square feet with a minimum lot width of sixty feet. This is, um, showing the monument sign that will be brick and stone, um, that will be placed at the entrance to the subdivision at Telegraph Road. And this is the landscaping plan complete with two trees per lot. Um, the development will have approximately fourteen acres of common ground that will be planted in Missouri native deciduous evergreen trees as well as, um, shrubs and grasses. And, um, they are also maintaining four point three acres of existing trees and wooded areas on the site. Um, at this time, the department is recommending approval of this site plan.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second it, Lawrence.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. And the last one is PC one forty-nine dash eighty-eight Christian Hospital, northeast, northwest.
So this is a comprehensive sign package for Christian Hospital Northeast. You can see the site outlined here, um, on the west side of Lewis and Clark Boulevard, north of, uh, Interstate two seventy. Um, so there are two, two sort of batches of signs. I'm going to show you, this first, uh, site plan shows the location of the petitioner's freestanding signs. Um, they're proposing three monument signs along Dunn Road. You can see M one, M two, and M three here. Four internal directional signs located G one through G four. And then twenty-eight, um, post-in-panel signs, which are internal sort of, uh, directional and informational signs. So this, this slide shows the monument signs that would be along Dunn Road. These are the, um, interior, uh, information directional signage. And what I'll add is that some of these signs, like the ones on the screen right now, are existing, but due to the proposed signs, they are coming back, uh, to utilize the comprehensive sign package to permit all their signs. And then this is what the sort of what they're calling the post-in-panel sign, the, uh, internal directional information sign. There are twenty-eight of these, which would have different, um, you know, wayfinding items on the different lines. Some may say emergency, some may point you towards, um, the different medical buildings. This exhibit shows the location of wall signs. So you'll see there's the main hospital building here, a medical office building one to the north and medical office building two to the sort of west here. They are proposing three emergency signs over the, uh, emergency room entrance. And then they are proposing wall signage for the main hospital building that looks like this, so Christian Hospital, as well as the BJC logo on the north and the south side. And then each medical building will have a sign on each, on two of the four faces. This is for Medical Office Building 2, the eastern elevation, and the western elevation. And then the other Medical Office Building on the north side, east elevation and the west. And then there is one sort of canopy sign, Welcome to Christian Hospital, located at the sort of visitor access on the south side of the site. With that, we are recommending approval of this comprehensive sign package.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it five zero. Anything for the good of the order?
Just that we have a public hearing in about 25 minutes using the same WebEx link that you used to get into this meeting.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I second, Bill Ballard.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it and we are adjourned till 7 o'clock.
All right, see you soon.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.